Councillors, we're going to get started. We are running a little bit behind. I call to order the meeting of the Industrial and Community Development Committee. All committee members are present, as well as all of the councillors, except councillor Rossignol. We have one item on our agenda this evening. This is the proposed zoning amendment for accessory dwelling units. We do have community development director, Mr. Bella Vance, here to speak on this, so I'm going to allow him to introduce this ordinance change and then open it to the council for questions. Mr. Bella Vance?
Good evening. Kurt Bella Vance, Director of Planning and Community Development for the City of Pevy. Yeah, before you, this evening, is the first draft, really, of the new ADU ordinance. As you are probably aware, the state had passed a requirement, well, not a requirement, but a change in zoning act, that it would allow accessory dwelling units as by right. And that went into effect, I believe, on February 2nd. So that allows people to basically build a second unit onto their property. It's meant for single-family zones, so wherever the property are in the city that's zoned for single-family, you'd be allowed to do that by right. We do have several zoning districts within the city that are zoned for a single-family. Let me see if I can. Well, it's pretty much 80% of the city. So that allows people to put what's called an accessory dwelling unit, or ADU for short, what they've been calling them. You can do it within your garage. It can be freestanding. You could add an addition on your house. You can put it in the second floor. There's many different ways that you can do that. Some of the call-outs on that is that it can't be more than 900 square feet, or more than 50% of the existing dwelling. So if you had a 1,600-square-foot home, you could only build 800 square feet, and up to a maximum of 900 square feet for that. They're similar to our FALAs that we have in the City of Pevy, except that there's more regulations in regards to the FALAs that we have, and it has to be a family member. And then there's also, we call out certain requirements in regards to the construction of the FALAs, where the state doesn't require any specific details to the ADUs, except for the fact that it has to have a shared entrance. So it can either have its own entrance or a shared entrance, so it calls that out as well. So there's a few requirements that we've been working with the state. They've had several webinars. They were working on the guidelines in regards to this. So we've been kind of playing catch-up up till February 2nd for this to come out. And actually, they just released a model ordinance, or a model bylaw, this week. So it's a little bit different than what was put before the city council for you to review, but we wanted to get something started. Some of the, really, the three items that we were looking at was having an additional ADU, so the law allows them by right, but you can also put additional ones on your property. We called that out in this proposed ordinance, to require a special permit to do that. You can also prohibit that, if you'd like. It's not a requirement to allow a second unit. The other one is parking. When the original guidelines came out, it said that you didn't have to require, or you couldn't require, parking if you were within a half a mile of a bus transit station. And what they defined that was if you had, if you could flag down a bus within a route, then you couldn't require parking. They did change that. Now it says "any bus route." So we were safe because we had bus stops, and we didn't quite meet that law, but they had changed it. So anything within a half-mile of our bus routes, we could not require a parking spot. And then the last one. The last one. Short-term rent, thank you. You don't have to require, or you don't need to allow, short-term rentals if you don't want to. Right now, we don't have anything in our ordinance that prohibits or calls out short-term rentals. A quick view of Airbnb or Verbo, there are rental units in the City of Pevy scattered throughout that people are renting now. But what we want to do is prevent people from building an ADU and just basically using it as a short-term rental. But those are the three highlighted areas that we were looking at, focusing on. And then it's up to the city council whether you would support those, or you don't. So what I wanted to do is get a draft ordinance before the council, so we can start the discussions on this, and see which direction we'd like to go. As I said earlier, we did receive a model ordinance this week, so that's not included in this, because this was drafted a few weeks before that. But happy to talk about that, or any other issues that you'd like to address in regards to the ADUs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bella Vance. Just before we get into more commentary, as Mr. Bella Vance said, the model zoning and really final guidelines came out this week, on Tuesday, actually. So I think, I thought it was still important to hold this meeting, to get the discussion going. This state law has, I think, a significant impact on the City of Pevy, much more so than it seems at the surface. So I think if we can give Mr. Bella Vance feedback, and then build our own ordinance off of the model zoning, that'll be the best way for any restrictions we put on to hold up in court. So with that, councillor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I couldn't agree more with kind of what you just outlined, in terms of the direction we should go. I am certainly appreciative to Mr. Bella Vance for trying to get something to us quickly, given that, you know, this law has already gone into effect. So I, you know, agree that that was the right thing to do, and thank you for doing it. But now that, you know, two days ago, literally, we got this model zoning from the state, as Madam Chair just said, we're going to be, I think, in a much more solid position when we're held up to scrutiny if we base our zoning change on the model language that's out there. With that said, you know, I view this as kind of the language they provided is really the broadest, most permissive language that you might want, and it's probably because it was put together by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and that's kind of their thing. Their, you know, I sat in on the webinar that happened a couple of days ago, same day that this was released. And, you know, in addition to kind of how this is worded, they kept kind of saying, "Well, you could do more, you could do more, you could do more." And, Madam Chair, you are, I believe, totally correct. This is going to have pretty significant implications for the city. There's a few things here that I think, even though we just, Mr. Bella Vance, you just explained it, they're not necessarily as they appear. You just stated that it affects single-family zoning districts, but can you do a little bit more in-depth explanation of your understanding of what that really means?
Yeah, I can try. So, for example, we allow by right, single-family homes in R1, R1BN2, R1A, R1B, R2, R3, R4, and BN. So those districts all allow single-family homes by right, and the way the law is written, that you'd be able to add an accessory dwelling unit to those homes within that district, within those districts. So it is spread out, includes BN and BN2. So there are commercial areas that it would allow additional housing.
Right. And so, I mean, those are the same zoning districts that I noted that would be impacted. So when you first look at it, you say, "Oh, it affects just R1 or R1A," and it's not. It's several other zoning districts, including zoning districts, that currently include multifamily housing. And with respect to which, what, the particular housing that, where it's allowed, it's not limited to a single-family home, correct?
I believe you're correct with that. I couldn't really find how they define that, except for they call it a single-family home. But my question was more of if there's a two- or three-family home, and you're allowed to build a detached, and you have the room, are you able to do that on those lots as well? It wasn't very clear, and it would probably be more of a legal question.
I agree. And so, but in the seminar, or the webinar, I should say, they made it sound like, you know, if it was a three-family home, a triple-decker, they use that example a lot, that you would use the entire area of those three units to calculate the maximum size of the permissible ADU. That, I don't know if the law actually says that, or if that's their take on it. I think we really need to probe that, but that was how they explained it. And I see, I know, Madam Chair, that you listened in on this webinar as well. You're concurring that that was your understanding?
Yeah, that was my understanding as well, as well as pre-existing non-conforming units also qualify.
Right, so that broadens it even more, because you may have a pre-existing non-conforming residential unit in one of these zoning districts that we didn't list, that would also potentially qualify for a protected ADU. So this is a lot of, we have the potential of a lot of these things being requested. So, given that, you know, I have a bunch of questions. Questions aren't really appropriate at this point. I think, really, what, Madam Chair, what you're looking for is just, what do we want to highlight? What do we want to ask Mr. Bella Vance? Task him to go do, in terms of how to craft this language based on the model language, correct?
Yeah, correct, councillor McGinn. I think that would be the best approach, to kind of raise our concerns, based on what we individually know about the new law. And then, based off of our feedback, have additional language provided to us from Mr. Bella Vance and his team. And then from there, decide as a council, you know, if there are limitations, we feel that we are, we're within our right to add, to then add them at that time, before passing completely. But I do personally feel we're on a bit of a time constraint to get this done, as the law went into effect prior to getting the regulations from the state, so.
Okay, so thank you for clarifying the approach. So with that in mind, I'm just going to step through kind of the notes that I have. And, Mr. Bella Vance, if you could just make note of these, that would be great. I'm just going to make one additional comment that is, and this came up in a prior conversation when we were talking about the MBTA housing provision. None of these are going to be counted on the subsidized housing inventory. Is that, that's correct?
Correct, yep.
So we really, if we get a bunch of these come online, this is going to, as come census time, come 2030 census, this is going to jack up the number of housing units in Pevy and potentially cause us to drop below the 10%. I see you nodding, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So again, another rationale for kind of proceeding on this with as much caution as we can. There's a, in the new language, or in the model language, and I apologize, I know not everybody has this in front of them, but just to be descriptive of it, there's a term called local ADUs. And so, local ADUs are something that a municipality can offer that goes beyond the protected-use ADU. I want to sensitize you to the term protected-use ADU. These are the ones that are, that we're required to offer under the law. But you can offer local ADUs. And I believe our current FALA language, if we leave it alone, would be considered a local ADU. And in that webinar, it made it sound like if you offered a local ADU, that you couldn't, you would have to offer, in addition to that, a protected-use ADU. So that causes me to wonder, should we, is there any practical reason to leave the FALA language in zoning today? You know, or given that a protected-use ADU could serve the same purpose, you know, do we want to look at eliminating the existing FALA language? Rationale being that you're essentially now offering the opportunity to have two ADUs in a single-family home or other. Do you have that note? Thank you, Mr. Bella Vance. And I guess the next would be, in, they've got a definition around principal dwelling and protected-use ADU itself. And, you know, we just kind of talked about this a moment ago, whether, you know, this definition was broadened by the MAPC, or if the law really requires it. But I'd like to know, is there a way that we can limit these to single-family homes only? So that would be, that would be the next note. I did not read the definition of a bus station the same way you did, about that it's any place you could flag down a bus, but I think we need to probe that one a little bit more deeply. It's a, a bus station includes any location serving as a point of embarkation for a bus operated by the Transit Authority. So your take on that is if you could wave down a bus, you could?
Yeah, the original language that they had was that if you could flag a bus, so, in the mid-'90s, the City of Pevy had that, where you would go out and flag a bus anywhere along its route. And I believe it was maybe '95, '96, we decided to institute bus stops. So the way the original language, or the first round, said it was, you know, if you could flag, flag a bus. So we didn't technically fall under that, but they've changed the language now, where we would now fall under that.
So I'm confused. I'm reading their definition. This is, serving as a point of embarkation. Is that, you're saying that's synonymous with being able to flag a bus?
Yes, the two is whether you have a flagged route, or fixed route, which is a bus stop. So what, how I'm reading this is, it doesn't matter whether it's fixed or flagged, as long as the bus is going by, you'd be able to, they're defining that as a transit stop.
So anywhere in the city that's within a half a mile where a bus drives by, that's, wow. I think maybe that's one for the city solicitor to take a look at, perhaps, as a supplement to the work you're going to do, Mr. Bella Vance, or your team, I should say. I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, within the several webinars that I attended, many questions were answered, that we would see what the challenges were on local ordinances and bylaws. So the sense was, similar to how our federal government is now, where we see a lot of court cases, that what we end up putting in, there may be challenges. And so it's a conversation that we would have, is, you know, do we want to become more strict in this, and then see if something gets challenged down the line, where we'd have to take it out? Or do we try to meet these with less restrictive? So that's one question that I would have back to the council. I'm trying to approach that.
I think that's probably the right approach. I mean, you know, it's just, and it's not driven by anything we did, it's driven by the timing of the law. I mean, this is, you know, it's like trying to change the tires on a vehicle that's going 60 miles an hour down the highway. It's already been accepted, and now we're in a position of trying to catch up on the zoning. And the state itself didn't even promulgate these guidelines until two days ago. So, you know, it's, I think, I think that approach of putting something out there that is, to use your terms, a bit more on the restrictive side, and allowing that to get challenged, is probably the right approach. I think that, again, if we were leaning towards, you know, looking for limitations on these, I would advocate for not allowing this to be, these to be done for the purpose of building short-term rentals. I think that was in your, that was in your draft. The, along the lines of what I said about the FALAs, your draft contemplated a special permit to allow for a second ADU, but you went on to say in your commentary this evening that we're really only required to allow one. And, you know, my suggestion would be that that's where we start, that we not include a provision for special permits. Maybe councillor Manning-Martin will remember this, she'd probably be the only one, but FALAs used to require a special permit, right? So you were, and, you know, it was a bit of a mess. They were coming in fast and furiously, and, you know, there was, that was all pushed back to the Building Commissioner. And, you know, that's what this would be. You'd go to the Building Commissioner for the one protected-use ADU that you would be allowed. I think that's kind of served us well in the FALA environment, and I would, I'd suggest that we keep it to that, and not create a contingency for a special permit for multiple In the dimensional standards, I believe you're going to be allowed to reference the current schedule of dimensional controls. So that would be 7.2 of zoning. That seemed to be getting a little squishy on the call as well, from a standpoint of, you know, are those the controls that you can allow, or do that need to be relaxed to a dimensional control that might exist for an accessory structure, like a shed? So, you know, to your point about putting something in that makes sense, and then perhaps allowing that to get challenged if somebody chooses to do that, it would seem to me that it would make most sense to stick with the dimensional controls that are in 7.2 of zoning. The off-street parking requirement, I think we would want to make that black and white, that that's, you're allowed to require up to one spot, again, with the caveat that if, it depends on what we find out relative to the definition of the proximity to the bus stops or bus flagging area, that, but that we want to allow, that we want to make it clear that there's, where we can, that we require one parking spot. I think that in your, we do have some historic districts in Pevy. I believe we have three of them. And where those exist, you're allowed to require design standards to be applicable, which you did in the draft, in your draft. So I would encourage you to keep that, keep that provision in there. Those are the major points, Madam Chair, that I had identified when I went through it. And, you know, I think if, I certainly would want to hear, I'm not sure if others had an opportunity to look at this model zoning, so they may be at a, if they haven't, they may be at a disadvantage to comment further on it. But, but in any case, if, as you suggested, Mr. Bella Vance can take our collective feedback back, create another draft, and then I think we'd be in a, as you suggested, in a more solid position to move forward on some actual changes to the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McGinn, councillor Gamache.
Yeah, just a couple of brief questions. First of all, can you send us, the ones that didn't get a copy of this, could you send an email to us, so that we can review this?
Yeah, councillor, it's on the state website now. It literally came out Tuesday, and it's pretty lengthy, so that's why I chose not to send it to the clerk, as a late communication. But, yeah, I can share that link with the clerk, so that everybody can see it.
Yeah, that would be, that would be helpful. The other thing is, it says "short-term rentals." What's a short-term rental? I mean, maybe a year if Tom wants to live in the back of the house, it might be two years if somebody else does. What's a short-term rental?
It's, I think they define it less than 30 days, or less than 30 days in a row. But it's, you know, you've seen them on Airbnb, and those types of places. And they, there's, they exist in Pevy already. You'd be surprised.
Yeah, I know, I know, unfortunately. The other question is, it could be 900 square feet, if it falls upon that formula? Now, that can be a separate dwelling. Do they have to adhere to the local zoning, as far as setbacks and other issues like that? I mean, you have to get a variance for a shed. Do these fall under the same variances that would need to be applied for?
Right, and that's what we want to do, where we create the specific ordinance, is to make sure that we keep in place the setbacks, and then, as councillor McGinn will let someone try to challenge us, that they don't, they feel that's unreasonable.
I just, I don't think it's unreasonable. I think it keeps a neighborhood, an ablehood. But anyways, there's going to be, again, I think councillor McGinn asked all the right questions, and, you know, we're going to, we're going to have to evaluate this with a fine-tooth comb, because I can see the damage that this is going to do to our neighborhoods. So with that being said, I have no further questions.
And one other one is that you, that I just thought of now, is that we'd want to probably put something in there that requires the, if you're going to do a detached home, that it's not in the front. So you'd have to, you can put language in there that you could require it to be on the side or the rear, so that someone's not building a tiny home in their front yard.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Welton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Councillor McGinn, I think, covered most of it. But I did have a question on the, or maybe not a question, but just a comment on the short-term rentals. Pevy not being a really resort town, I Peabody not being a really resort town, I don't, I'm not seeing like there would be a huge influx of people building just for the sole purpose of putting it on Airbnb or VRBO or one of those sort of websites. So I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of prohibiting short-term rental, but I think we should look at a few different, similar towns and how they've restricted it. I could see a situation where somebody builds an ADU for their family, you know, their, their in-laws, and then their in-laws go down to Florida, and then they want to have somebody rent it here or there. I just don't see the demand for, for an Airbnb. And I think one of the things that you could look at potentially is more restrictive code enforcement needed for Airbnb or a short-term rental. I keep saying Airbnb, but a short-term rental, like something where it needs to be sprinkled, it needs to be, you know, much more overly compliant with, with safety issues and things like that, to mitigate the risk there. But I don't see it being, I, I can't imagine somebody spending a lot of money to, to build an ADU to, to rent it. I just don't think the market's there to give, have that return on investment. So I would be curious to see how other cities similar in size have, have addressed this. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Council Peach, through you. Since we're on the topic of short-term rentals, Mr. Belavance, you were correct, it's 31 days or less is considered a short-term rental. And respectfully, I disagree with the need for it in the zoning. I would, I would, that'd be the first thing I would take out of there. I think that, I'm not going to get on my soapbox, it's, it's a law, it's, it's passed, and another disgraceful act by the state legislature, specifically our state representatives and state senator that decided that they were going to inundate us with what, again, is most definitely an unfunded mandate, because there are substantial costs to the city with this. And I do not believe that this is good in any way for the city. And that is from somebody with a young daughter who likely could not afford to buy a house anytime soon, and my initial thought was, hey, that, this is great, I could put my, you know, my daughter in the garage. Well, guess what? 60,000 other people could put their daughters in the garage, and that's probably not a good look for the city of Peabody. And then with the, Councilman McGinn, to your point with the parking, it's written in this, this model zoning, seven different ways from Sunday, that it is a half, half-mile. I've watched four different cities pass similar ordinances to this in the last week, and they all agree that it is a half-mile, so we can get that opinion from the solicitor. But I think that's what we're stuck with. And if you go a half-mile circumference, or excuse me, radius from any bus stop in the city of Peabody, I think that pretty much covers, you know, most of the salt part of Peabody anyway, which, again, is the most densely populated portion of the city. So I don't see this in any way being a good thing for the city, but I'll digress on that and get to the point. I would not want short-term rentals. I think that the rentals in and of themselves, or the ADU in and of itself by right, is, is a burden enough on the city without having neighbors have to worry about who's staying in the house next door for a five-day period, seven-day period. I think it opens up a can of worms to some, some unknown elements. What else was there? The second ADU, I'm 50/50 on that, Councilman McGinn. You know, I, my initial thought was, all right, this is enough, let's not do the, the mandatory ADU, I'll call it, I forget what the terminology you used is, but the mandatory ADU and the one that we currently have under zoning to allow two ADUs on a lot. But then, after you mentioned the affordability requirement, whereas we can't put the affordability requirement on this law, we can on the ADU, we, for the one in the city's zonings, I believe we, through you to Council, excuse me, to Mr. Belavance. So on the required ADU in this law, we cannot put affordability requirements on it. If we allow an ADU under our current zoning, which we do, can we put an affordability restriction on that and make it a special permit requirement, as was in the past for, for, so there's two different ADUs we're talking about here. We're talking about the one that's by right, and we're talking about the one that the city regulates under zoning. The one that is regulated under zoning, I believe we would have the right just to, to approve that ADU with a, excuse me, a restriction, an income restriction. Am I wrong?
I don't want to answer that I, that I'm 100% on that, but I think that you're right, that we, we can't allow further restrictions on, on a second, on a second ADU.
Yeah, so I mean, that's just something I want to consider there. I'll let Councilman McGinn respond to my question.
Councilman McGinn.
Yes, so, thank you, Madam Chair, through you to Councilor Turco. So by definition, the FALAs are for family, and you can't put a family restriction on a, on a, on a income deed restriction. Doesn't, doesn't work. So zero of our existing FALAs are counted on the SHI today, and they won't going forward, so.
Thank you for the response. So that makes sense. So in that case, I would, I would be opposed to even keeping the, the current zoning for the second FALA. I think that, you know, the one that we're, we're kind of being forced to put on there is enough. Just my opinion. Some of my concerns occurred, and I don't know how we address these. Number one, infrastructure. I mean, I don't even know if the, the city, being as aged it as it is, and a lot of areas, can handle that type of, you know, obviously, we'll see a slow rollout of this, but I think it will eventually catch on and be quite, it'll, it'll be widely used. So with that, how do we address, this is why I consider this an unfunded mandate. How do we address the aging sewer and storm drains and, and the, the water issues in Peabody? We've been under drought conditions for several years now, and we're restricted as how much water we can use. These, these are all issues that the city of Peabody has to deal with, and they've left us no opportunity to, to, for a funding mechanism to come up with, you know, the finances to deal with this. Has, has this discussion come up at all in any other communities?
As with any development, it's really, it falls on the city and towns to, to create their, an infrastructure that works, and if there's issues, they need to correct it. And then, I mean, the state offers you low-interest loans and other things like that, but it's really ultimately the responsibility of the community.
Right, and I, I tend to agree on some of the infrastructure work, but as far as the water usage, obviously, we all know that we have, you know, restrictions on how much water we can use out of the Ipswich, you know, river and, and other areas. I mean, I think it's, it's something that we, we need to, to bring to the state, that they can't keep that restriction on the amount of water we use when we barely have enough as it is. And, you know, it's something that, again, I know we want to get through the zoning, but I just want to keep on the record that after the zoning, we have to address the need for water, and, and the issues that most cities and towns, I think we're, we're pretty much all at a drought condition now, although the mayor hasn't declared a drought yet, but I believe he, he probably will shortly. With that is, is fire and police. How do we dictate, or how do we let fire and police know that, so there's a fire at 161 Linfield Street, my address, and how do we make them aware that there's a FALA in the back, on the side, around, there's no address requirements in this? Or can we put an address requirement, like, that they have, like, the 161 and 1/2 Linfield Street for the, the rear unit, so that the fire department's aware that that's where the call is going to? And I'll let you answer that in one second, because it, it goes to my second question of, you know, a warrant served by a police department. They're going to serve a warrant at 161 Linfield Street, it might not be me that they're looking for, it might be, it could be me. But it might be, but it, it might be the guy that I rented the apartment to that also has 161 Linfield Street, which then I'll go one step further, if I have to evict said tenant out of the ADU, and, you know, I want to serve due process, I have to serve process to 161 Linfield Street, which is my address, not his address. How does all, you know, how do we handle all of that? So I guess, you know, I'm asking you these questions in hopes that you can get some answers on any of those. I would not mind requiring, and I don't think it's burdensome, some sort of address, whether, or signage that says that there's an ADU on the property. I think, you know, maybe an address is burdensome for the clerk and, and the post office, but maybe some sort of signage to let the, the fire and police departments know that, you know, there is an ADU on the property, because that's a dangerous thing, you know, this is geared toward the elderly, to, to put the elderly in, in some of these units, your grandparents or whatever. If there's a health risk, you know, a health issue, and the fire department shows up and doesn't know exactly where the ADU is, you know, to me, that's a major issue. Then Councilman McGinn addressed most. The only issue that I saw brought up in two communities was building in flood zones, in which apparently, I guess, is okay, which, you know, as long as, you could build in a flood zone as long as it is above the flood plain. So can you get an opinion on that from the city solicitor? If, as long as the, the land is above the flood plain, you can. So a basement unit is what was described, that is below the flood plain, would not be allowed as an ADU, because it's in a, in a flood area. But if it's in the flood plain but above that basement area, it would be allowed, so. And I'll let, if Council Peach, or President Peach, if you don't mind, Council, excuse me, Council Peach, if, Mr. Council McGinn would like to respond to me, if you don't mind.
Councilman McGinn.
Thank you for the, allowing me to respond, Councilor Turco. Councilor Turco, I, I'm glad you brought that up. That wasn't a note that I took from the webinar, that you are, are allowed to include language with respect to aquifer protection areas and flood plains. So I think, I think probably the appropriate thing in the Peabody context would be that they'd have to go, you know, to the conservation commission. But I, I, I don't know specifically, but I, but according to the, according to the webinar, you are allowed to put those types of restrictions in place. You're allowed to require some extra permit, permitting under those conditions. So, so I guess the, in conjunction with you, Councilor Turco, the ask would be to, to include those, those additional requirements, because we are allowed to do that.
Thank you very much. Yes, I would ask, Kurt, if you could, to, to put something in there with regard to flood zones and conservation areas specifically. I know it's called out in other sections of zoning, but it would be nice to have it specifically in this zoning. Other than that, I think we'll probably have another meeting. I know that we're kind of in a hurry to, this law's already passed, it's already in effect, I think Kurt said to me earlier, a few people apply already. I have, again, through another city and town, that's, that community development representative said that he was under the impression that once you had a call for a public hearing to change the zoning, that it froze the zoning, and you, you had some time, but I don't know that to be the case. So hopefully, we have a little bit of time. If we don't, then I would suggest to Council Peach that we, we move on this, you know, I think Kurt can, with this model zoning, it should be, fly kind of pretty quickly, and we can likely have a meeting next month early to, to get this passed, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Just to address your address question, it is in the model zoning that the address of any ADU follows the state guidelines for addressing what those guidelines are, I have no idea. But that, that is in there, that they are required to follow whatever those state guidelines are for addressing the new unit. So there, it seems to me that they would have different, it'd be like 161C or something, I don't know. Are there any other councilors? Council Higgins?
Thank you, Chairperson. I just, I'll be brief, I don't want to reiterate anything that's already been stated. I, I commiserate and sympathize with Councilor Turco's statements about the state mandate here. I have a question about the opportunity to add a restriction for lot size. Can we add a minimum lot size?
Council Higgins, I can answer that. They said definitively no. You cannot restrict these to lot sizes. You can restrict them to, like, dimensional setbacks that we have, but we can't say in existing dwelling on a 6,000-square-foot lot, which my house lays on a 6,000-square-foot lot, anything I do to my home is, requires a variance, anything, requires a variance. To build a porch, I need a variance. But we're not allowed to restrict based on lot size, and can only restrict based on dimensional relief.
Thank you.
Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One, one other request, Mr. Belavance, that you, one thing that I didn't see in the model zoning that was in your draft was an applicability section, which we have in most of our sections of zoning. So I think to be internally consistent, we should, we should add that to the model zoning, and I think that that should make specific reference to those zoning districts that you rattled off, so that it's, it's not vague. I mean, right now, it's, the interpretation of how this applies to quote-unquote "single-family" zoning is, is very vague, so if the applicability section would, would hopefully clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Seeing none, Mr. Belavance, I just have a couple, I mean, we've been talking about this since the law passed, but I would, you know, not necessarily for the zoning language, but a plan from your office of what to do with existing FALAs. I know right now, we collect an annual fee for them. You know, I believe the, there's language in here that they're all grandfathered in, but then in speaking with the building inspectors, like, we have FALAs that are definitely not legal FALAs existing in the city. And if FALAs are not being rented out to family members as they're intended, that they should be brought up to code for the by-right ADUs, which require a separate entrance. So I, just if we can have some sort of plan of, like, how we're going to handle those, maybe, I know that this law requires a lot of reporting and man time, again, another unfunded mandate portion of this. But if we, if we have an idea of how much time we're spending on collecting for the FALAs, going out, inspecting them, et cetera, if, if there's a recommendation, if they're all brought up to code to ADUs, or if we allow existing FALAs to remain in place and still collect a fee from them because they need to be annually inspected, I would appreciate that. And if no one else has any questions, I will take a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.